Six now. Yep, it just went to six. Did the okay from there it is? All right. I see, I saw the screen pop up. Good to go, Deb? Thirty seconds, sounds good. Okay. I'll wait for your thumbs up. All right. Hey, we are at six o'clock, so we're gonna call the June twenty-second meeting to order. We always start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have four agenda items on the schedule for tonight. Before we get into those, we'll do a quick roll call of planning commission members that are present. So we will start with District One.
Jason Wienerman here.
All right, thank you. District Two?
Dave Bentrud here.
All right, representing District Three, Jason Crowe, that's myself. District, District Four, Sean Blackburn, will not be present tonight. District Five?
Mike Pearl here.
All right, thanks, Mike. And then we have two at-large members, Rich?
Rich Blankish here.
All right. And Tara.
Tara Snorf here.
Very good. All right, with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number One. That is to consider a conditional use permit request submitted by Heartland Landscaping of St. Cloud, Minnesota, on behalf of Gerald Steele and Lisa Steele, Eden Valley, Minnesota, for an after-the-fact major shoreland alteration according to Section ten point two point one four I of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number four thirty-nine. The request includes construction of a retaining wall on a steep slope in the shore-impact zone. The property under consideration is Lot Twenty-eight of Langs Rice Lake Edition in Section Seventeen of Eden Lake Township. Property address one seven five zero three Rice Lake Road in Eden Valley. Quick roll call of the members who were able to visit the site. We'll start with you, Jason.
Nope.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
I also was. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Tara?
No.
All right. And with that, Nick, you want to take us through the staff report?
Sure thing. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is after-the-fact retaining wall application here on a steep slope in the shore-impact zone. The soils in the area are mod, low to moderate erodibility. There's some flood plain, map flood plain area along this shoreline, up to three point three feet above the ordinary high water level. The vegetation along the shoreline is very good in both the shoreline and upland areas, including on the steep slope. It meets the minimum shoreline vegetation assessment score requirements. The septic system on the property is certified as compliant. That was from twenty twenty-one. In August of twenty-one, there was a minor shoreline permit issued for a retaining wall replacement for a thirty-eight-foot-long by three-foot-high retaining wall with steps on the slope to the water. In January of this year, well, we had done rein inspections to follow up here this last winter. In January, we sent a letter to the contractor and the property owners after we found on the reinspection that there was an additional retaining wall along the stairway that was built without, that wasn't on the permit. Because it is on a steep slope in the shore-impact zone, it requires a conditional use permit. And then in May, we received the request to keep the retaining wall proposed, retaining wall as constructed along the steps. The contractor was Heartland Landscaping. They've been a licensed contractor for a while. And that retaining wall that was constructed, that is, as part of the application before you tonight, is to leave as constructed. The retaining wall, it's about twenty-one feet long and about two to four feet high. It's that boulder wall adjacent to the steps on the slope. As mentioned before, that thirty-eight-foot retaining wall on the bottom of the slope was permitted as a replacement under the minor permit, and that's not part of this conditional use permit application. Essentially, the options are to approve as requested, deny as requested, which would mean removing the retaining wall adjacent to the steps, reworking the steps, and revegetating the slope, and stabilizing that. And then the third option would be to approve with additional conditions or requirements. The one listed condition here would be to maintain the existing vegetation on the slope and in the nearshore area. I did not receive any correspondence on this item, and that is all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Are the applicants here on this one? And if so, if you can come up to the front, just make sure the little green light's on. Yeah, it should be. You can sit down, though, if you want. That's more for public comment than higher speakers, so.
So if I sit here, you reckon you have the first?
You could, you can sit there and get comfortable, yeah. So if you can just state your name and address for the record.
Name, Todd Hottenfield. Address is two one nine seven nine Franklin Road, Rhode of Clearwater, Minnesota.
All right, very good. Anything you want to add to Nick's report?
Not too much. Maybe just a touch. So I'm here behalf of Gerald. They live in Dunham Hopkins, so it's a little bit of a challenge for him to get off work and get up here in time. But as we were constructing the wall, initially, we didn't plan on putting a wall in there, but as we were constructing it, and in regards to trying to find the best angle to get up this thing without having to excavate out and cause more, you know, excavation on the property, this seemed like that was our best fit in putting some of the boulders alongside there. I probably would have attempted something different. I'm not sure what we'd have done at this point yet, but prior to this, that January, we had a shoreline, one of those shoreline meetings for the excavators and contractors was, there was a potential change in some of the ordinances where usually we're kind of giving some free rein and putting in stairs going down into a shoreline. And I believe that March or something, there was a bit of an ordinance change in regards to having to apply for a minor, which I was a little unaware of, or actually just unaware of, and not knowing that we couldn't do something like this. So when the reinspection came out, I was a little surprised to hear that this is now needing a CUP, understanding the conditions now with the new ordinance, but I was a little bit out of the loop on that, so. So, yeah, as we, as we put this in, our goal was obviously to disturb the bank as little as possible, and in doing so, we kind of felt this was our best option. We could, there was a large oak on the top of the hill there. We could have tried pulling some of that grade down, but I think in that, we may have been, we may have caused some, you know, further opportunity for that treat either to not make it or, you know, removing more vegetation than we desired, so I guess this is what we felt was probably our best option.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from planning commission members for the applicant or staff?
Nick, Jason Wienerman. On your options, number two, deny as requested, part of that option is rework the steps? What are you envisioning in terms of reworking the steps?
Sure. So with that, if that wall, wall were to come out, there would need to be some grading activity and probably some alteration of the steps to just to create a stable slope there. The way it's constructed now, that retaining wall is holding soil, so, I mean, that would entail removing the wall, doing some regrading, and probably lifting the steps to some extent to get them above the grade that's adjacent to them, so that it's more stable.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Go ahead, Joe.
Just looking at, at it, and when I was out there, it's extremely steep, and I was just wondering, why was this is considered a steep slope and not a bluff? Can you explain that?
Sure. So a steep slope is any area that is greater than twelve percent in slope. A bluff, in order to be considered a bluff, you would need to have at least twenty-five feet of rise above the ordinary high water level to the top of the slope, and would have to average thirty percent or greater in slope. So here, I don't believe we have the twenty-five feet above the ordinary high water level to consider this as a bluff.
Okay. And so, so had it been a bluff, then we'd be looking at pilings and steps opposed to the approach they took?
Not necessarily. It's still regulated the same way on steep slopes and bluffs for stairways lifts and landings and retaining walls. So it would have still come to you because if it's a steep slope or a bluff in the shore-impact zone, the retaining wall would still come before you, whether it was a steep slope or a bluff.
Okay. And then, as far as the finished product, I'm just wondering if, are you anticipating, are you at the finished level as far as doing construction work?
We are.
Okay. Then at the, at the base of the retaining wall, what's going to actually be in front of that retaining wall then? Because I can envision, oftentimes, people have good intentions of maybe putting something there, maybe some vegetation, but then we come back a couple years later, and then they have a patio there. Do you know what, what the plan is for that area?
Currently, the plan for the homeowner, under my understanding, is to maintain it as is. They liked a little bit of sand down there. It gives them some opportunity to store some of their equipment. There is, they, they realize, the first year we had this installed, that's, later in that spring, we had some pretty hard rains. It was, we'd seen an average of, obviously, four, three to four-inch rainfalls. That lake came up to the bottom of the step. And then this last spring, when we were out there looking at the project again, ice and water were at the bottom of that step with some unusual snowfall we had this last year, so they have zero intentions to put any kind of hard space down there. And they're also, in twenty twenty, I believe it was, or twenty-one, we, we put in a permeable driveway, which they needed to meet some of their hard space requirements. So they're under understanding, they're up against the wall on that, too, so they don't, again, they're, they don't have any options, really.
And Nick, if that's correct, that wouldn't be permissible down at that level?
That is correct. It would not meet the, it would be too close to the water for that, and as mentioned, their impervious coverage is, is right there, so.
Nick, question that I have. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the Stearns County Soil and Water District's notes. It, it sounds like the current wall, it, it wasn't addressing a past erosion problem, but it's not creating a new one at this point either. Is that a fair understanding of those notes?
That is correct, yes.
In, in your experience, is the, is the risk of pulling some of those boulders at this point, does that, does it create more future erosion potential until, like, vegetation or something like that would be established? Or is it better off just leaving what's there at this point? And I, I say that because I hate having after-the-fact things coming at us. Puts everyone in a terrible spot. Look at this, it's, it doesn't have some of the same problems or concerns we do when giant concrete walls or things like that go in. It's fairly natural, but again, it's still a deviation, and, and after-the-fact, it's really tough dealing with. So then you look, okay, well, the whole spirit of this is trying to protect the waterway. So at this point, what do you do? How do you make lemonade out of lemons? Your experience, is it better to leave them or better to pull them?
Well, I don't want to make your decision for you, but essentially, if, if they were removed, there are ways to stabilize it, and like I mentioned previously, the steps would have to be altered again. So in the interim, you would have disturbed area and soils that would not be stabilized. Currently, as it is constructed, it's, it's stable, so there's, there's not really an erosion concern at this point. But if you were to, to remove it and to have to rework it, obviously, during that timeframe, you would have the potential for erosion problems, and then if that wasn't constructed properly at that time, then yes, you would have future, you know, concerns in terms of erosion on the slope. But as it is now, there's no active erosion concern.
Thanks. Go ahead, Tara.
So just looking at the application history, it says that the minor shoreline permit was issued in August of twenty twenty-one, and then this letter to the contractor went out in January of twenty twenty-three. I'm assuming it got constructed sometime in twenty twenty-two then? Or when was it constructed?
Spring. It was either late April or early May. So it was our first project. There was actually still some frost in the ground when we dug into this one, so I might guess it had been early April, I'm sorry, mid to late April.
And then, was there a date on those pictures?
Those would have been from a couple weeks ago.
I'm just trying to see if it's all vegetated in and what.
That's probably your most recent picture.
Okay.
Question for the applicant, Jason Wienerman. When you, when the boulders were installed, or when they were considered, and the staircase was being built, is this engineered? Was there an engineer who designed this, or was these, were these put in as the project was proceeding?
They were put in as the project was proceeded. Engineers in our field is usually typically not required unless it's above four feet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question from Jason. Does, the ordinance, the way that it's applied, does it allow flexibility from professionals to kind of do some of that design build as they go along? Or what is the application there? Like, if it's not on the drawing, then they can't build it? Or how, how is that applied?
Yeah, so anytime you have a retaining wall, it would, it would have to be shown on the plan that's approved. We have had contractors who, you know, once they get into a project, there needs to be modifications, and, you know, then they can call us out there, and we can do a follow-up site visit and review that at that time, but everything would need to be shown on the permitted plans that, that are approved.
So another question I had was, like, what's the, what's the length of time that it typically takes you to do one of these walls?
Sure. That's a two-day project for us.
So? So if you're doing a design build like this with no engineered plans, and you have to make a call, if the county can't get out there in two days, you either make the call to do it, or you?
Or we halt the project.
Or you halt the project.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Nick, I have one.
Go ahead, Joe.
The area where the paddleboat is, where the thirty-foot wall ends from there to the property line, it looks like that area has been cleared, and then there's no retaining wall. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the stability of that piece, and I don't know if, if, if you were either. I did take some pictures of it. And, and so I, I'm just wondering about, again, how stable that area is and what the plan for the future would be for that, for that area. And in that, if they are looking for some type of mitigation, that that maybe by placing vegetation there to hold that piece there could be a form of mitigation, so. And it's, I would say it's about fifteen feet, maybe?
Sure.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I didn't evaluate that.
Did you see that?
Yeah, I didn't really evaluate that area of the property. There's no requirement that they have to stabilize it or, or do anything to that area. You know, the area with the retaining wall was a replacement, so there was a wall there previously, and that's kind of where the extent of the replacement happened. You know, in terms of the stability there, I, I guess, you know, it remains vegetated, largely vegetated, just like the rest of the slope, so I guess there wouldn't be any pronounced erosion concerns there that are any different than much of the rest of the lake shore around that lake, I guess, from what I've seen, so.
Nick, just a question. So the pre-site, the pre-pictures, it looks like a fairly consistent slope across the site. We now have a constructed stone staircase. What does this do to the drainage pattern on the slope? Is it now coming down the thing? Is it going under the steps? Has it changed at all? Is this significant change?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's different, that's for sure, when we have, you know, we have a more linear spread-out pattern here where water can come down the slope from what was previously, you know, existing there. To the extent that there's going to be runoff channeled along the steps and wall to create a, you know, directed runoff and erosion issue, I don't know that that's necessarily the concern, a concern here. There, there may be a little bit, but I, I don't see it being a, an identified problem.
All right, any other questions before we go to public hearing? All right, with that, we will open up the public hearing. If anyone hears from the public on this one, I'd like to make a statement. You can come up to the podium and state your name. Not seeing anyone rushing up.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Jason to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right. So any further discussion on this item?
I'll just comment. I, actually, I thought it was a very, very nice addition. I, clearly, the, the wall or the staircase is visible from the lake, but I don't believe the, the neighbors could really see it. I think it fits with the, what's there. I think overall, it looks a whole lot better than the wood timber stuff that was there before, so I, I, I don't see a reason to remove the staircase.
Yeah. I kind of tend to agree with that. I mean, it's natural enough. I, after-the-facts really are tough. I, I don't like sending messages that it's always good. What I would like to do, though, obviously, this is done to try to preserve our water systems, I'd like to add a condition if it's approved that would basically require all-rooted vegetation below that top stair to, to never be mowed or removed. Just kind of staying consistent with trying to preserve that slope. I don't know if anyone has an issue with that language if we were to go that route, or has a suggestion on a different?
Or you want to require the natural vegetation to stay?
Existing vegetation that's there to stay, yep.
So just to clarify, how does that vary from the condition that's proposed here?
Oh, I'm sorry, jeez. I was sitting, actually, I was looking at the options above, and I literally wrote it down below. That would be exactly consistent with that? Jeez. I read the wrong lines. I missed that on the condition. So thank you, it's consistent with your suggestion, Nick. And as long as that nearshore is defined clearly enough, all good. All right, any other further discussion on that? Since I took us down a sideways path? All right, then we'll go to findings of fact.
Jason, I was, Nick, you know, I, I am concerned about what I mentioned about the, the natural area below the wall. Do we necessarily, can we put anything as a condition, or is that just assumed? That it remains natural?
Below the retaining wall to the bottom of the steps there?
Yeah.
The challenge there, so the ordinary high water level is going to come up probably toward the top of where that rock riprap is, and there's not any vegetation presently between that rock and the wall. So is that area that, that's where you would want to see vegetation?
Well, I guess, what I, again, my concern would be that eventually there might be concrete or pavers down there, which they shouldn't be.
Joe, just speaking, knowing that lake, well, that Mother Nature takes care of that portion. That, that gets beat up a lot with water and ice.
Would there be any benefit from putting, let's say, vines along that retaining wall?
It would be difficult to establish them. Yeah, and, and just to note, in terms of like the patio or impervious surface in that area, that's all a regulated activity, so that would require a permit, and it wouldn't be granted for that, so. There, that's the other, you know, check on that portion as well.
But people don't always seek a permit.
All right. So with that, findings of fact. Number one, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, or enhance habitat? Please describe the reasons the applicant made the alteration and include documentation if available.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I don't believe it was done to protect water quality, control erosion, or enhance habitat. I believe in our testimony today, there was a discussion on improving the aesthetics of the site.
Yes, thank you, Jason. And I believe also replacing the existing rotting wall that was originally permitted in the stairs going down. Number two, why did the applicant fail to obtain an alteration permit or comply with requirements before commencing work?
Well, if I understand Todd's comment that there may have been some indication in a shoreline training that would have authorized this type of project as it was done, but we found out that it wasn't, so I'd say it was a unfortunate, maybe misunderstanding of the training or the rules.
All right, thank you, Dave. Did the applicant obtain all other required permits and comply with other requirements? Please identify all of the required permits and whether the applicant, applicant obtained the permits. And there was a minor shoreline permit pulled for the, the lower portion of the retaining wall. All right, number four is the alteration in a sensitive area, shore or bluff-impact zone, wetland buffer, survey site or other documented high-value habitat. Identify and describe all sensitive areas.
Mr. Chair, I think it was identified as a shore-impact zone.
Yep, steep slope. Thank you, Tara, yeah. Good. Number five is the alteration visible from the lake or public water? Describe the degree to which the alteration is visible.
Clearly, it's visible from the lake. It can be seen from the, the water side of it. I don't believe neighbors can see it, but certainly from the lake shore, they can.
Very good, thanks, Dave. Does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood, or will it result in a substantial detriment to the neighboring properties? Describe all substantial changes and detriments.
And again, I may have gotten ahead of the thing a little bit when I said before, but I, like I said, I don't believe that neighbors can even see stairwell or the retaining wall for that matter, so it, it doesn't really distract from neighboring properties, in my view.
Very good. Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate an existing buffer between the ordinary high water level, water and impervious surfaces, or create a more direct conduit for storm water to flow into public waters? Please describe for the answer.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. We did move the location of the stairs, so it is now a slash across the landscape, so we have increased the impervious surface across that slope with indeterminate impacts to storm water at the moment.
Yeah, well-stated. Like the indeterminate comment. Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? Describe the change or damage for each category. Aesthetics of the shore as viewed from the waterway, character of the neighborhood or shoreline, vegetative buffer, erosion or sediment control device system, storm water management device system, fish or water, wildlife habitat, or water quality.
Letter A on the aesthetics, we went from a natural vegetative scape to a hard scape, a stone, and with the current drought that we have going on, we don't know if the stairs are going to end up being a conduit down to the lake.
All right, thank you, Rich. Number nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the sites? Please explain how mitigation would occur and the results of the mitigation. There was, there was a little discussion regarding that. If the rocks were removed to restore it, it, it comes down to, the area is disturbed during that time, and then the potential for damage could exist. Once fully restored with vegetation, that should have been fine, but. All right, and then number ten, would the minimum benefits to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment the applicant would suffer forced to restore the alteration? Why or why not? Describe the minimum benefits and details of the detriment to the applicant.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. So as Greg Berg's SWCD comments stated, this wasn't to solve a problem. So we have an undesigned retaining wall installed on the site with unpredictable outcomes in severe events, so that could be a significant impact to the county should this wall fail at some future time. The applicant would definitely face a financial hit for restoring the wall and, or removing the wall and redoing the stair work, so there is a negative impact to the applicant, but I do think the minimum benefits for the county would far outweigh the detriment.
All right. All right, so with that, a motion would be in order.
I would move to approve the conditional use permit for this project. I would move to approve the conditional use permit for this project.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, with the condition? Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right. So motion made by Dave, seconded by Tara to recommend approval with one condition. All those in favor, say aye.
May I have a discussion on that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. You say, are we going to add the special conditions that are listed on this page here? Are we going to, is that, were we going to include those?
The only condition I'm aware of is to maintain existing vegetation on slope and in the near shore. Which conditions are you referring to?
The one referring coming on this page here, special conditions?
Just to clarify on that, those were the conditions from inner shoreline that was in place previously. So those are the listed conditions from the permit that was already issued.
Okay.
I had included that because that outlined the permitted work.
Okay. So then do all of these still continue to apply then?
So all of the standard conditions would apply. Those apply in all shoreline alterations?
So the one I'm concerned about, it says no tree cutting, no new impervious service, and no riprap beyond what's there existing. Okay? I don't know if we want to include that or not.
So that wouldn't be, that's not included on here. That's not necessary to address those.
Because they couldn't do that anyway.
Correct.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to be able to happen.
All right. Okay, so we have the motion made to recommend approval with the one condition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have, let's see, four and two, I believe, on the recommendation for approval with, I think, Rich and Jason.
Yeah, could we do a roll call on that?
Please, thank you.
All right. So Mike?
Aye.
Rich?
Nay.
Tara?
Aye.
Jason was a ye, sorry.
Dave Benford, yea, or aye.
Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
And Joe, you're not voting on this one. You get another chance later. All right. So with that, motion to recommend approval to the county commissioners at their meeting on which date, Angie? Do you know the date of next meeting?
July 11th.
July 11th, thank you. Will be made. So if you have any other questions, you can reach out. Thanks.
Well, good. Thank you. Thank you, Planning Commission.
All right. So that brings us to agenda item number two. And that's to consider a plat entitled Ostenorf Edition consisting of five lots submitted by B.J. Ostenorf, Sock Center, Minnesota, on behalf of Linda Ostenorf Revocable Trust. According to Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230 and Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, the property is in part of the southwest corner and northwest corner, lying north and south of Highway 28 and south of Yorkshire Road in Section 2 of Sock Center Township. And I think, Tara, were you recusing or stepping away from this one?
Yes.
Upstanding? All right, cool. Thank you. And then we will do a quick roll call of members who visited the site. And we'll start with you, Jason?
Nope.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
I did not in this case. Rich?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
All right. Very good. With that, we'll go to Jennifer for the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. This is a five-lot plat that we're reviewing. This property may look familiar because you saw it back in April when there was a rezoning request. So at that time, the property north of Highway 28 has been zoned R1. But the property that's south of the road was rezoned to R5. So since the rezoning was approved, now they're before us with a plat. You can see they're doing two lots on the north side of the road and three lots on the south side of the road. The plat, as it's laid out, meets the subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements for lot size, septic suitability, setbacks. There is a feedlot setback you can see shown that encompasses the southwest corner of the plat. That's that arc that's in there. That is actually the applicant B.J.'s feedlot that's causing that setback. And interestingly, that setback is a quarter mile because that's what the township requires. So B.J. does plan on registering the feedlot, and so then the setback will go away. Wetlands have been delineated. There is just one wetland, which is along the east property line in Lot 3, Block 2. And so a 25-foot setback is required from that wetland. And that has minimal impact on the buildability of the lot. Being we're on a state highway, we did reach out to Mindot. We got comments from them. And they have, the comments were included in your packet. B.J. already got permits from Mindot to widen the two driveways that'll come off of Highway 28. So that work is actually done. And then lots 2 and 3 on the south side of Yorkshire will access off the township road. So we will require an easement because there will be shared approaches here. So we want to make sure that that's covered by an easement. Stormwater management isn't required. They do fall just under the one acre of total new impervious. The property, the northwest part of the property is within the Shoreland Overlay District of Sock Lake. So it's likely the home on Lot 1, the very northern lot, will be within shoreline. I shouldn't say it's likely, it's possible. But then the other lots will, other homes will all be outside of shoreline. There is a park dedication fee required. Since we're doing a new residential plat, it's $1,000 per lot. The Parks Director has recommended we collect the cash on this one and not land. The township reviewed and approved the plat May 10. We do have the required 10-foot drainage and utility easement along the roads. Reaching out to Stearns Electric, they did ask that we require utility easements along all the side lot lines. Plating Committee discussed this quite a bit and did not recommend those easements on the side lot lines. They felt like the lots were large enough. Utilities would likely come in off the road into each building site and not need to be shared on the lot lines. So that was Plating Committee's recommendation. But you can certainly have more discussion on that if you would like. So that's a summary of the plat. And so I will go through the conditions that were recommended by Plating Committee. So number one is a declaration of restriction recorded that would restrict the two septic sites that are on each lot, that they be maintained undisturbed and natural. And then a subdivision agreement with a number of items. First, requiring construction site best management practices during construction on the lots. Letter B, in order to protect them for sewage treatment use, the two soil treatment areas on each lot shall be staked and roped off before any ground disturbance on the lot. Letter C, a wetland delineation, wetland delineations are subject to Minnesota statutes. The delineation approval for Ostenorf Edition is valid for five years from the date of decision. And then I'll fill in the blank once that final decision is approved. Letter D, no more than 8,700 square feet of impervious surface is allowed on each lot unless a stormwater management plan is designed and implemented. This requires an engineered plan to be submitted for review and approval, a financial guarantee, and then the stormwater system shall be maintained in perpetuity. Letter E, a statement that the plat is located in an ag area and the construction, expansion, and operation of animal feedlots and other ag uses are permitted. The developer acknowledges that future buyers may be exposed to sites, sounds, smells, and conditions of modern agriculture. And letter F in the subdivision agreement would be a statement that the soils on part of lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 2, have very high sensitivity to groundwater pollution, meaning surface contaminants can reach 50 feet below the land surface in hours to months. Infiltration of stormwater runoff and other contaminants should be avoided in these areas. Okay, then, the third condition is requiring a water supply verification be recorded with the plat. We did get water test results from a neighboring well, and the nitrates are acceptable. Highway certificate will be recorded with the Mindot comments. The egress and utility easement I mentioned will be needed for lots 1 and 2, Block 1, lots 1, Block 2, and the unplatted land that's to the west, and then lots 2 and 3, Block 2. Then the feedlot unregistration shall be recorded before final plat approval. An affidavit of trustee is required with the final plat, and then the $5,000 park dedication fee. That's all I have.
Very good. Thanks, Jennifer. Is the applicant here on this one? All right, perfect. And if you can also state your name and address for the record?
B.J. Ostenorf, 39683 State Highway 28, Sock Center.
All right, cool. Anything you want to add to Jennifer's report?
No, she did it better than I could have, so.
All right, very good. Thanks. All right. So Planning Commission members, any questions for the applicant or the staff on this one? All right. Go ahead, Joe.
Jennifer, on the water sample, just curious, what is it, how is that we require that water sample? And then what's appropriate and what in order is, or is making sure that the water's good in all those lots?
Sure. The ordinance requirement is that a minimum of one water test be provided for every 10 lots. So this plat required one test. They got it from one of those lots to the west there. If they don't have a well within the plat, they can take a sample from any well within 300 feet. So that's what they did.
That's, that would be my question. How far away, or how close does the water, the test have to be in order to validate the test?
Yeah, within 300 feet. This one was even closer, I think. But, and then it has to meet the state standard, which is 10 milligrams per liter or less for nitrates.
Question for you, Dave. You're on the Plating Committee. You look, reading through the notes, everything looked pretty straightforward. Anything you would add or particular discussion items that the minutes missed?
It was straightforward. The Plating Committee unanimously, I believe it was, supported the project, so.
Cool. Awesome. All right, any other questions? All right, is anyone here from the public on this item? All right, seeing nobody, a motion would be in order.
We'll make a motion. We close the public.
All right, thanks, Rich. Thanks, Mike. Motion by Rich, seconded by Mike to close a public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing non. We'll move to findings of fact. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? I think it is under zoning ordinance Number 439, Sections 9.7, 9.9, and 10.2. Also subdivision ordinance Number 230, Sections 5 and 8. So we should be good there. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I believe it does. Under the Living Goals section, number 2, manage the impacts of growth and development. And also under rural residential policies, they address the future land use plans. And there's the one that deals with, oh, Living Goals, number 3, support housing options that give people in all life stages and all economic means viable, safe, and affordable housing.
Well done, Jason. Thank you. A bunch of them. All right, number three is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
When you look at the situation there, you have all these residential structures already when it's also a designated transitional area by the county's 2040 plan.
Fits pretty well.
Yep.
Good. Thanks, Rich. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, the slew of conditions.
Yeah, there is a long list of conditions on this one to make sure. So, thank you. And then number five, are there any other issues pertinent to this matter? Township or city input, federal, state, local permits, et cetera?
Township had their hearing and approved it.
Yep. Township approval, state highway, department had access approval. I know Stearns Electric weighed in on this, so.
The City of Sock Center also, I believe.
City of Sock Center as well. Very good. All right. So, yeah, a lot of support and it fits the long-term comprehensive plan. So with that, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions.
All right. Motion made by Mike. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thanks, Rich. So motion to recommend approval made by Mike, seconded by Rich with all of the proposed conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So motion to recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item number three, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Kathleen Oshwald of Sock Center, Minnesota, according to Section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 5.7 acres from the residential R1 zoning district to the Agriculture 80 zoning district. The property is in part of the northeast corner of the northwest corner, lying northwest of State Highway 28 and east of Brickyard Road in Section 2, Sock Center Township. The property address is 39198 State Highway 28, Sock Center. All right, real quick, roll call of members who visited the site on this one. We'll start with Jason. No. It was our two, I'm sorry. Dave?
Yes.
All right. I was not on this one as well. Then we go to Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
All right. Very good. So with that, Jennifer, you want to run through the staff report again?
Yes. Okay, so this is a 5.7-acre parcel. It's zoned R1. The applicant is asking to rezonate to Agricultural 80. This is actually just up the road from the last item we had the plat. But anyway, if this rezoning is approved, what they would like to do is a short-term rental on the property. Sock Center Township, about a year or so ago, maybe less than a year ago, changed their ordinance and they prohibit short-term rentals in residential zones. But they do allow them in ag zones. So that is what's leading to this rezoning request. And the applicant can explain more of her plans as well. So anyway, you see where the location is. That was discussed. The property actually currently has a driveway on Highway 28. They also have frontage on Brickyard Road. The applicant has talked about moving the access to Brickyard Road, which the township supports. Let's see. And if you were able to get by there, it's pretty much just a wooded property with a home, some green space or grass area. Not much to it other than that. The property, it's surrounded by a lot of residential lots. There is ag land to the north. And of course, then, you know, once you get a quarter mile to the south, it turns into a lot more ag land there. About 2/3 of the property is within shoreline of Sock Lake. So if the rezoning's approved and she proceeds with a short-term rental, then we would be handling the permitting for that since it's in shoreline. Currently, it has the home. If it's rezoned, it still just gets to keep the one home. Sock Center Township did support the rezoning. That's about all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Yeah. You're not now applicant here on this one, if you want to come on up? All right. And then same thing, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Oshwald.
All right.
And my address is 44101 Brickyard Road.
All right, very good. Anything you'd like to add to the staff report on this one?
I just, I know that everyone has a little bit of an issue with the short-term rental. One of the reasons why I purchased this piece of property two years ago was to do that before that mortuary him came in. Also, in respects to neighbors, I am the neighbors. If you look at the piece of property up above, that acreage, 44 and 1/2 acres, are owned by me. Also, oops, excuse me, across the road, there's 7 and 1/2 acres that are owned by my husband and I. by my husband and I. And so I don't feel like it would be something that would disturb neighbors so much. I feel that zoning it agriculture would be a benefit to Sauk Center, or well, to that piece of property, actually, because there's quite a bit of buckthorn on that piece of property, and I may be able to get some goats in there to fix that. The, moving the roadway would be a huge help, too, because right now, the entrance to that property is right on that curve. If you were there, you saw that, and it's super dangerous. It's only zoned for four people to stay there, and, and so it's not like going to be huge amounts of people. And in respect to why I really want to do it, it's kind of a long story, but when my husband and I were building our house, there was a series of people who had cancer in my family, and we wanted to do something that would give back to our city for what they've given us with our businesses. And we wanted to make it into a, like, hospice house. My husband and I don't have any children, and it would be a nice gift to the city. We went through a whole series of meetings, and in the end, when we were talking to the hospital, they said, thank you, we would take your land and your house, but we can't guarantee that you would have it as a hospice house afterwards. So at that point, we were kind of like, that wasn't our intention. So when we purchased this house, we thought if we would keep it while we were still living and have an income we could generate, we could make it be a guest house for people who came to stay, like, to visit people who were in the nursing home. For instance, we have a friend who was at the nursing home, and her daughter, daughter would come up from Minneapolis, and they would, she would stay with us when she wanted to stay and visit her mom. And we thought this would be a perfect opportunity for that. So it's not just a short-term goal, it's a really long-term goal that's been going on for quite some time for us. And so that's the whole reason why we bought it, I guess. So I, I'm just thinking that hopefully it will work.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions by Planning Commission members for the applicant or the staff on this one?
Go ahead.
The only comment I have, I'm local from the neighborhood, and I can attest to the driveway. I used to plow the snow past there, and there's a little carport there. The car is about four feet from the edge of the right-of-way. And this piece of Highway 28 is unique to Minnesota, because it's the only state highway that does not have a right-of-way. There is no right-of-way on Highway 28.
Hmm.
So there is, it's right there.
Yep. Thanks, Mike. Jason?
Mr. Chair, just a question for the staff regarding the township comment. Is the township aware that the applicant intends to apply for a future permit regarding a vacation home?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're not working around the township on this. They'll be surprised.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wienerman, that is correct. They are aware of that. They refer to it as rural tourism, or something like that.
Agricultural tourism.
Agricultural tourism, but that's been the discussion that they've had, is the rental.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a question for staff as far as the, I understand the reason for needing to rezone to allow for rental. I'm wondering, what are the rules to, for hospice? Does that change anything? I mean, to me, that kind of implies medical. Is that, is that something that would be allowed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bentrud, good question, and no, that's not something the ordinance currently addresses for an egg or residential district.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, Angie.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bentrud, no. Jennifer, you're right. I think the only thing that we caution people, anyone who lives on a septic system that is undergoing cancer treatment, chemotherapy can be hard on your septic system, so we always advise you to talk to a septic pumper and maintain your system a little bit differently if you're undergoing cancer treatment. So that could be something that they, you know, want to look into if they end up doing something for hospice.
Excuse me, but if you're in hospice, you're not being treated for anything anymore. It's kind of your last hope. Are, are you aware of quiet oaks? They're out in the country. They're on, they're on a septic.
Question for staff.
Go ahead, Tara.
Is there something, is there a reason why the Sauk Center Township doesn't allow for the short-term rentals in residential, but then they have made a recommendation to approve it?
Right, yeah. The township had a, they had a rental that has been troublesome for them, so, and it was on the lake. So I guess, and I've worked with the township quite a bit the last few years. So their goal is to not have lakeshore rentals in the township. Now, part of Sauk Lake is in the city, so that might be different. I don't know. I don't recall. I don't remember what the city landed on for rentals. Anyway, so they landed on prohibiting them in residential zones, but if somebody's in an egg zone, they would be okay, and they allow the rentals, because the theory is that there's less people around to be bothered by the rental.
Yep. Which goes to, look, if you just state for the applicant, love the project, right? And I, I'm, no problem with vacation home rentals. My struggle is now we're at the county, we're rezoning something because of a position that the township took that doesn't require this. That, that's a struggle. From my perspective, it has nothing to do with you, but rezoning this, unless having a goat is not allowed in the residential zoning district, and I think there is some limitations as how much egg you can have. But I mean, otherwise, it makes no sense to, to rezone this to egg. Again, your project is fantastic, but I just don't like throwing around rezoning all over the place.
It ends up looking like a spot zoning approach.
Absolutely.
When you look at the map, everything is residential, and all of a sudden, you're going to drop in this five acres. It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't follow the comprehensive plan. It doesn't make logical sense.
Mr. Chair, I could address the animal units real quick. So in an R1 zone, the only animal units allowed would be chickens. And then in the egg 80, if it's rezoned, they could have up to three animal units on the parcel.
Okay. So it could be rezoning for goats, for buckthorn.
Well.
I honestly thought that my 44 and 1/2 acres was agriculture. When I purchased it, I think it was. And I meant to go back and look, but then when I came to do my application, then Jennifer showed me that it was residential.
Yeah, it's, it's part
And then.
egg and part residential. Yep.
And then, isn't Cindy Triscos, who abuts that land, isn't that agriculture?
Correct. She's also split. She's mostly egg 80, the green, but she's got a little bit on the northwest corner that's residential. Yep.
So it's just, it was a farm altogether to begin with.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, Tara.
One question I have is, it feels like, not a question, I guess, a statement. It feels like we're trying to fit this description, what she's trying to do, into agritourism, which I don't know what the definition of that is supposed to be in the plan. I didn't look up agritourism as a definition. Was there a definition? It just seems like we're trying to, trying to rezone something and fit it in with language to make the plan work versus following the, what you would normally do in a zoning situation.
Mr. Chair, I can answer. There is a definition for rural tourism, which is a commercial business providing recreation, relaxation, or enjoyment that emphasizes the rural or historical heritage. Uses may include, but not limited to, retreat centers, crafting destinations, event centers, reception venues, holiday attractions, retail sales, or similar.
So that does seem to fit what the applicant is looking for.
Mr. Chair, so along the same vein, the discussion we're having, this is not a reflection on your property at all. We're talking about, I think we're dancing around now.
Yeah.
Is what's going to happen after you. So someone's going to come in after you come in and say, we want to, I mean, if you go to, what is it, page 82, and you look at all the residential lots on Brickyard Road, is there anything that would prevent any of them from saying, I want to move from R1 to A80? And by doing this today, is the township shifting the responsibility for this development onto the county because they've put themselves in a bind?
Do you have to be so many acres to be in A80?
Not to, but, go ahead, Jennifer, you can add that.
No, you do not.
No, but. Page above that.
Yeah, if you go to the, I think showing the transition areas are, are you referring to the comprehensive plan?
Well, no, the, page 82, I think. Maybe you go, oh, maybe I'm in the wrong page. It's the one that has Brickyard Road on it. So, that one. So we've got all those residential R1s lying on the west side of Brickyard Road.
But then again, on the east side, it's egg.
I'm just saying, I mean, if folks come in, someone says, oh, well, hey, I want to have a vacation home rental, and the county board's gone ahead and been willing to rezone an R1 to an A80, and now, right in the middle of that, we have an A80. And we have set precedent that we will do that.
But all that land is mine.
No, I'm talking the residential pieces, the small lots.
The little ones on the, on the left-hand side?
Yep.
On the lake?
Yep.
Kathleen, actually, this has nothing to do with your, your reason, the purpose for your, your vacation home rental. I think we all are in full support of that. It's the rezoning that's the struggle, because we're rezoning based on a reason for using the property, like, a special reason. Like, you want to do this, or the properties are going to rezone regardless. And that's what we're trying to avoid, because you shouldn't rezone based on a specific use. It's, rezoning should set the county and, and everyone that lives in it up for success, not running into land conflict issues. And so that's because, the only reason we're doing this is because of the township's moratorium on vacation home rentals, which now puts us in a spot that would, we would never rezone this, based on what's happening with that part outside of what the township has done. And it puts us in a very tough position right now to do that. And I don't know, if anyone else has different thoughts, I tried to articulate kind of where we're at on this.
It's interesting, because the township member is, when I called to ask if there was a way to, what was the word I want, where you have a, I can't think of the word, where you ask if you can have a one-time deal where, against the moratorium, a variance, thank you. And he said, no, you can't do that. But he actually was the one who told me. And then they voted yes.
Yeah.
But the reason why I needed to come here was because there's just that little bit that's too close to the lake.
I, no, I, I get it. The buck got passed. All right, well, we will probably have more discussion. We should keep this item moving, though, unless there's any other questions or discussion anyone wants to have before we go to the public hearing and keep this thing going.
Mr. Chair, we can certainly share the planning commission's discussion with the township. Mike, as a member of Sauk Center Township, maybe you want to take a special visit to one of their meetings. I, I don't know how well we'll get through to them. They're pretty, they're pretty determined on this.
Can we continue this one, though, then?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
We can check our.
So Kathleen, if you'd be willing to continue this, until there's some chance to go back to the township, then we won't have to do a vote on this tonight. And maybe the township can revisit their position or ways in which to do, to handle this. Because, again, your project, I think everyone supports that. That's figure out a way to make it happen, but don't want to have to do some rezoning we'd never otherwise do in order to make that happen. So hopefully, we can find ways to work around it.
Can I ask one more question?
Tara, go ahead.
Is there a reason why the township can't actually pass a variance against their own ordinance that they have?
Yeah, good question. This is not an allowed use in the residential zone, so you can't give a variance for a use.
They could modify their language of their ordinance and, and make some exceptions and do some other things, potentially.
I wish that John Wicker was, John Wicker, I'm thinking of.
John Basil?
Thinking of main prayer. John Basil was here tonight. I, I don't want to speak, obviously, for them. Maybe they'd have another view on this, but they're very, very adamant about this. I do not think that they would reconsider, but you have the right to continue it with or without Kathy's consent. But I just want you to know that I don't, there's no misunderstanding. I think they're very intentional in what they're doing.
They're very, very clear about not having any more further on, on, on the, on the water, but they're the ones that came forward with the idea, and that's why she's here, and they're for it. And.
My issue.
You look at our, you look at our 2040 plan, and you look at that this is a transitional area, and then you look at all the residential property around it. I'll say it again, it ends up being spot zoning.
We just approved, we just approved plating about, you know, a couple hundred yards away.
You see where we're at?
The discussion that I'm struggling with right now is, if the, if there isn't a way that the township can modify, or, or if there isn't a way that the township can approve a variance, and we wait and hold it off, what are we accomplishing for the applicant?
It's a great point. Not much. And just so I'm.
Chair, a couple, couple things. So, but the intent would then be to actually have it as a vacation home rental, then?
For the time being? Oh, I'm sorry.
I know. And, and see, that, that's what I have a concern. Your intentions to me are awesome, and I appreciate that. But do we actually end up not having something that we didn't want in, in, in the end? And how do we make sure that your intentions are the ones that actually would be fulfilled? That's, I would have a concern about that. It's, it's like when we rezone a piece of, when we rezone a piece of property, commercial, and we get something in there, or industrial, and we get, obviously, something in there that we don't want. And, and as far as the ability to change that with a variance, is there any way we can change, send that over to, I hate to say this, but to our Board of Adjustment, perhaps, to make the ruling that they would allow this under their ruling opposed to the township?
I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah. No, good idea to bounce around ideas. That option wouldn't work, well, yeah, we couldn't, we wouldn't issue a permit that doesn't conform to the township's ordinance.
And also, I want to applaud this board here for sticking to their guns on, on the zoning, because we want to keep the integrity in the rules that we have in place.
Just so I'm clear, because I'm learning all of this, the township is unable to rezone this themselves?
That's correct. Yep. State statute says the authority lies with the county.
Okay, but they could issue a variance? If they can't rezone it, they can't issue a variance, can they?
No, they can't, because this use is prohibited in the residential zone.
Got it.
Yeah. You know, one option that just came to my mind, I don't know if Sauk Center tossed this around at all, is prohibiting rentals on riparian lots, and maybe not the non-riparian lots. I mean, I'd be happy to talk to them and see if there's any other way around it.
They could, they could, they could change that language and define. I respect their decision on that, but then define to prevent that use. So if it's acreage or lot size, I mean, they approved this for some reason. So clarify what you don't want, and then allow what, what is okay. My opinion, that'd be the feedback I'd suggest, because otherwise it puts everyone in a tough spot.
I'm struggling, because if we say you should rezone it because you have an honorable use, that isn't really a. that isn't really upholding any of the, any of the other requirements that we're talking through.
So, I just have a question, then. You know, the forty-four acres that I have? If that's, if that's residential, is that correct?
It's part residential and part A80. Can you see how part of that is green? That triangle is part is green, and that's your land, and that's A80.
The green part is egg?
Yep.
Even though it's all, all farmed?
Yep. Yeah, the zoning doesn't always match the tax classification. Your tax classification may well be egg. You might get egg tax, tax class.
Is there a way she could put those parcel together?
Altogether?
We did, we talked about combining them, but they each have a home, so we wouldn't necessarily... I'd have to look at it more closely to see if, if it would work to combine them with the two homes. But the one thing Kathy did talk about was applying to rezon both pieces to egg.
And make it one big piece, because that's what it used to be. It used to be a, a family farm of a wolf family, when it was originally to Sock Center. But then, if that is so, then that brown part could all be divided up like BJ's doing, right? You don't want that either.
Actually, long-term, that's kind of what an orderly development of, of that area would be.
Oh.
Yeah, so...
That'd be a shame.
Fair enough, fair enough. But that... So, what ends up happening in lieu of that? And, and the reason for zoning is just to create orderly development of counties. And we are in a county, the eastern portion of the county is very developed, the western portion's undeveloped, by and large. But if you don't have any kind of zoning to help guide that process, it just turns into a hodgepodge, a piecemeal. And you can go to other states and other large cities that didn't have zoning, I guess, structure or discipline in place, and you end up with long-term challenges. You end up with situations where roads end up getting crazy congested, because there's all these mixed uses, and there wasn't the infrastructure put in place to support it. So, zoning makes sense. It just has its challenges when you deal with transitional areas like what you have here. But...
So, when you put a... Can I ask you one more question? When you put a moratorium on something, how long does it last?
Mr. Chair, yeah. I can address that. So, typically, moratoriums are put on for a year. It could be less. Statute allows a year, and then statute allows another six-month extension. State statute, yeah.
But, Mr. Chair, what they did is they actually changed their ordinance. There's no moratorium anymore.
Oh.
So, it's, it's in effect.
I see.
Right, so they... So, Jennifer was just looking at when they meet next compared to when your meeting is next, and I'm not sure that we're gonna gain anything there, but...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think somebody mentioned the sixty days. We could, the planning commission could continue it till the July meeting, but would have to act on it at that time.
Okay.
Due to the sixty days. So, you know, that might give us time to chat with Sock Center Township. It wouldn't give them time to, of course, make any ordinance changes, but...
No, if they were open, go... Well, I was gonna say, if they're open to modifying their ordinance, though, with some of the language that would allow it, well, then, then that becomes easy, and we don't have to rezon, and that's something that happens. If not, then I guess we gotta figure out what... I would call that option A from a county perspective, if I'm speaking for the group, and someone chime in if I'm not.
Mr. Chair, just a question for staff. What's the applicant fee for this?
The application fee? Seven hundred dollars.
And three hundred for the township? And I already did, met with Jay Knott, which was another two fifty.
Mr. Chair, however, the, the board can make exceptions on that, on their certain circumstances, if it's our problem, so...
All right, so, we have options, and I'll leave this up to the applicant. Ultimately, we can proceed and go through the process and do a vote tonight, or we can continue it to July. And I'll leave this totally up to you in this case. Waiting allows us to ask a few more questions and pop, so we come up with some other solutions. Going tonight, we're gonna vote on what we have in front of us, then, and...
Mr. Chair, I got one more question for Jennifer. Jennifer, if it's... You do a conditional use permit, the conditional use permit stays with the property, right? Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is it possible, now, I don't know, could we do an interim use permit, so that as long as she owns the property, that you'd be able to do this under her ownership, but once she sells the property, then it changes?
Good question. So, the rezoning goes with the land, so the rezoning, if it's approved, it stays. Now, then, the use, being the short-term rental, that goes with the landowner?
Right. And so, rather than do a conditional use on this, could we go back to, to the township and, and see if they would allow us to do that? Because then, then she could get what she wants if she wants to use again for hospice, okay? Or with any type of rental or agreement with the, with the hospital in a humanitarian sense, but it would not be necessarily a... It would not be able to be a continued...
Sure.
Vacation home rental. Just thinking outside the box.
That would be an option, yeah, for the township to consider amending their ordinance, yeah.
My husband and I just met with somebody today, because we're working on our, our wills, and we're in the process of hopefully selling our business, so we're going through all these steps. And so, I hadn't thought about that as making it designated yet, but that would be a good point. We could include that in our will. Not that wills can't be changed, I, I know, but that would be something to consider, too.
Mr. Chair, question for the staff. So, if we were to vote to continue this, so that staff and the applicant could bring our concerns back to the township, do you have enough... Do you feel you have enough information to adequately express what some of the concerns of the commission are?
Follow-up to Jason's, do you feel like anything from the township would change between now and the next meeting?
I was looking, the township meets the second Wednesday of the month, so July 12th, if my information is correct. So, my thought would be, I would ask to be on their agenda and attend the meeting and discuss this with them. And at that point, you know, all they could have really is discussion. They won't be able to make an ordinance change or necessarily commit to an ordinance change, but we could have discussion. But, like I said, it would still come back to Planning Commission in July unless Kathleen waived the sixty days even longer.
I'm really on the fence, and so I'm trying to figure out what's the, what's the best course of action, so that we're not holding you up, but we're making the best decision regarding...
Have you seen the property? It's gonna be a while. It's been a big project. It was way worse than we had ever imagined. And it, it really was. It's built wrong to begin with, so we have huge micro-lamp beams in the place, and it's been truly a nightmare. And so, it will be a long time before it's ready. My guess is next year.
I think your carpenter's been working on it all winter, right?
Pardon?
I think your carpenter's been working on it all winter.
Has. And this part of the reason why I need that short-term rental is to make up the difference for, for it. But it's gonna be lovely. He does beautiful work.
So, sort of build on the continuing question. If the commission votes today to continue till the next meeting, can the applicant work with staff after that time to continue? Does it have to come back to us?
The applicant can waive it longer, the sixty days, and we could have more time.
Oh, okay.
If she wishes.
All right, I am going to make a motion to continue this until the next meeting, so the staff can work with the township board to express our concerns. And there might be a trend of the board position that might be able to be described.
Yep.
And that's, I, I... The reason I'm doing that is I don't want you to pay another five hundred dollars, because we're making a decision that none of us wanna make.
Yep.
So, it's gonna take you a little more time?
No problem.
I wanna totally respect your, the outlay on this, and the township's put us into a crazy hard position.
Yep.
So, we're trying to do what's best for you.
I know. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is that a motion, Jason?
That was a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tara. I was gonna ask for that next. All right, so, motion made by Jason to continue this, seconded by Tara. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Good luck, Kathleen. We'll be chatting again.
Thank you.
And work with our staff. They'll do their best to...
Jennifer's been wonderful.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to Agenda Item Number Four, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Channel Marine of Richmond on behalf of JCMH Properties LLC of Richmond, according to Section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezon approximately forty acres from the A40 zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The property is in the part of southeast quarter, lying west of Frostview Road in Section Nineteen of Wakefield Township. Property address is 22365 Frostview Road in Cold Spring. Real quick roll-call of members who've visited this site. We'll start with you, Jason.
Nope.
Dave?
Yes.
I was able to as well. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yep.
And Tara?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, we'll go through staff report quick.
So, now, the rezoning request here, this one to go from A to Commercial. The applicants own a forty-acre parcel in Wakefield Township, kinda right between Richmond and Cold Spring. And if the rezoning to Commercial is approved, they intend to use the property for outdoor boat storage and storage buildings. They do own Channel Marine. You can see, obviously, on this 2021 photo, there's been outdoor boat storage there since they purchased the property. They've been under a compliance agreement with Wakefield Township to eventually get them into compliance, since outdoor boat storage isn't allowed in the A40 district. So, that has, that's what has led us to this rezoning request. If the rezoning is approved, then they could have the outdoor boat storage. They may or may not also erect some buildings for storage. So, the property here is... The access to the property is off Frostview Road, which is a township road. As you can see, the zoning in this area is immediately surrounded by A. You've got quite a bit of residential, because there's, of course, the chain of lakes there. To the north, along Highway 23, we've got commercial and industrial. Those lots do access either from 23 or from the old 23 primarily, which is now County Road 83, I believe. So, it's, it's fairly residential area, a hundred homes, approximately a hundred homes within a half-mile. And then, over a dozen businesses. There's also Royal Oaks Campground to the east. Let's see, so there is some wetland on the property, and that's pretty obvious. You can see on the north side, it's wet, and that's not what they're... They're not storing their boats in the wet area. The rest of it is grassland. Used to be farmland. There was a gravel pit on the property at one time, a few years back, I think when Highway 23 was widened, if I recall. Anyway, so, right now, it's zoned A40. They actually aren't allowed a home on it, because the building entitlement was transferred off before they bought it. And if it's rezoned to Commercial, they're also not allowed a home. The comp plan has this listed as a transitional area, and also partially an A rural area. So, the comp plan, you can see there, the peach is transitional, the yellow is A rural, and then that yellow, or I'm sorry, the green is a natural resource overlay, and that's where the wetlands are. The lease score was low on this property, forty-four point eight-six. We have used our threshold of sixty-five when we say it's pretty good farmland and shouldn't be converted. Wakefield Township did review it and recommend approval. Their paperwork was enclosed. They sent a lot of stuff with it to really help you understand how they came to their decision. So, hopefully, you've read through that. And then, also included in your packet is a list of all the commercial district allowed uses, just as a reminder of what would be allowed if the rezoning is approved. And as far as public testimony, the township submitted what they had received, that was in your packet. We did get one more letter this week, which I also forwarded to you from the Langs, and I can read that later if you want, or, or not, since you all got it. But that's all I have.
All right, very good. Thanks, Jennifer. The applicants wanna come up on this one? Just both state your name and addresses for the record.
My name is Casey Hupfer. Channel Marine address is 101 Fourth Street, Southwest Richmond.
Jeff Miller, Channel Marine, 101 Fourth Street, Southwest Richmond.
All right, thank you. Anything you wanna add to Jennifer's staff report?
She was pretty complete, and I think, and also, the township staff report that was included in the packet as well. We bought this in 2019 with plans, knowing that outdoor storage was not allowed on A land, with plans to transform over to storage buildings. The township gave us initially three years. They extended that to five years total to allow what we have. We still do have plans to want to go with indoor with majority of our storage. Obviously, building prices, interest rates, everything like that have hit so crazy over the last few years that really altered our plans as far as how fast we'd be able to build that and transition into indoor storage, not being able to charge enough to essentially to, to build them that way. So, and, or the outdoor storage is kind of the, fills the needs for the area right now. When I met with the township, I also met with Commissioner Bertram, as well as Angie, to kinda talk about options and discuss the issues that we had. There is a large amount of boats in the area, especially in the Richmond area, that need to be stored with the chain of lakes that we have. Intune, being right across the road from us, that's storing easily as many boats as us, if not more. We're storing almost five hundred boats total, needing and, you know, having a need for that in the area on what needs to be done, something that's obviously affordable to the people in the area as well. So, therefore, the need is there. It's just a matter of, you know, trying to fill it with that. The property that's there, it's, it's very low lease score. It was a gravel pit at one point. Our, our farming friends took one cut of alfalfa off of it now, and now it's all burnt up. You know, that's all they're gonna get for the year, basically. So, there's not really any value to that. We don't see any need to change anything that's out there. We don't wanna modify, cut down trees, change wetlands, do anything like that. If anything, we'd like to, you know, increase the, the natural resources that are out there, outside of the storage area that we're using. And really, it's just a seasonal storage thing that we're using it for. We're not using it year-round for anything that way. Once the boats are back in, in the water, it's, it sits blank until fall. So, thank you.
All right, good. Thank you. Any questions by Planning Commission members for the applicants or staff on this one?
Jason, I got a question. So, presently, because it's A, their outdoor storage is not permitted. That's correct?
Correct.
But if it's switched to Commercial, will the outdoor storage then be permit?
It is a permitted use.
Okay. So, I'm just curious, is, is that a concern for us? Are, are we concerned about him putting the sheds up and, or is it just a matter of keeping it outside so that it gets switched to Commercial, so that you can do the outdoor storage? I'm just curious, what, you know, what your goal is? Is it, is it to have the sheds, to have the indoor storage, or is it just to have storage?
Storage overall. Obviously, wanting to...
We have the need, I understand.
Yeah, wanting to increase indoor storage, just because it's time-consuming or, you know, time-saving for us as well, not having to shrink wrap all the boats and dispose of all that. So, ideally, wanting to put up storage, but at the same time, if outdoor storage is not allowed, to the point where, like, let's say, we put up a large shed and we have to move fifteen or twenty boats to get one boat out? Well, then, at the end of the day, those boats need to be put back inside the shed, because outdoor storage isn't allowed. You know, in that extent, everything would have to be put in, from what I've been told. So, there's a need for both indoor and outdoor storage. In the, you know, in the meantime, until the sheds are built, we obviously need the outdoor storage, but still wanting to go indoor as well.
Okay. Okay. And what's the, what's the cost differential on indoor and outdoor storage?
Shrink wrap outdoor storage right now is at about $19 a foot, somewhere in there. Outdoor storage or indoor storage, we're able to charge more than that in the mid twenties, typically $25 to $26 a foot.
Question for staff. I was wanting to look up the ordinance language. Do you, what's the, what's the why behind no outdoor storage in ag? So as I was sitting there thinking about this, it's like, ag land is used. Look at a lot of the county. Ag land is used a few months of the year during the growing season. And then the rest of it, it sits there being completely unused. So why wouldn't there be like partial storage or something allowed? And I just didn't know how the ordinance language read. Or the why behind it?
Mr. Chair, I can take a crack at that a little bit. I mean, the way the ordinance is written is you can have outdoor storage. If you have an ag oriented business, you can have outdoor storage if you're, you know, have, I think, a limited rural business. So, so businesses that are allowed in the ag district, you're allowed to have outdoor storage for. But having outdoor storage as its primary use is only in the commercial district. And why is that? I guess I'd, I would say that's what was decided in 20, in 2000, when we adopted our first ordinance. I think that the planning commission, and I feel like we knew this was going to be asked. The planning commission and the county board would have to decide, do you want to see RV boat storage, camper store? All the things. Is that what you want your landscape to be in, in rural Stearns County? I'm not saying you do or you don't want to see that, but if you do want to see that, then an ordinance change would be required.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, the basic answer. And in your ag districts, it's, what's your primary, what are you trying to preserve? Agricultural, right? So we don't want to see outdoor storage going on parcels that are prime farmland and, and all the things that you typically are concerned about.
Fair statement, but, and I, I get that part of it. What I'm thinking is long-term comprehensive plan, you try to preserve ag. And the reality is, I just spent the last two days driving through Iowa and Nebraska, all right? So central Minnesota's got its challenges to stay ag. So you have to come up with viable ways to make acreage and agriculture a viable option. And for a lot of small parcels, if you're just extracting revenue off of a chunk for whatever, three months out of the year, it might be a long-term challenge for the county and its comprehensive plan. So maybe something, Joe, to think about. I, I realize this is a, it's a debated topic, but it's, it's something to think about. We have agritourism as a way of preserving.
Just rural aesthetics too. So rather than seeing one location of 300 boats, you're going to see 150 locations with four boats, five boats. Is that what you want to see?
Yeah. Well, a boat or a tractor, because a tractor can sit there today. You know what I mean? It's, it's just a, it's a different way, but it's something to think about. Okay, that's, that was my question. Sorry for the comments there. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, a question for staff and maybe the applicant. So there's the natural resource area in green on the map. That's covers the wetland and looks like maybe a spew down there. What's up in the northwest quarter? What's that funky tree planting thing up there?
There's a gravel pit up there.
Gravel pit?
Yeah, it's like a small little gravel pit. If it's on the northwest corner of our property there?
Yep.
Yeah, there's like, like a little gravel pit with like cedar trees and stuff. And.
The reason I ask is.
Right by the 19 there.
So if you look at the way the wetland there, and then you've got the trees, it's buffered from the residential stuff. And if that's an undevelopable gravel pit, or it's expensive to develop, we do have a buffer there. There's a fairly sizable unusable buffer between the residence and what you'd see on any commercial development on that line. So there is a buffer there between the two sites.
Question?
Go ahead, Tara.
Since you have a five-year agreement to have that use there from Wakefield Township, is there a reason why that can't be extended again for this case?
Mr. Chair, Tara, that's up to, that's between the township and, and Channel Marine. I mean, the, the way that it started was it, it just happened and it's not allowed. So then Heidi Stalbarger on the township, and I had met with them and said, well, what now are we going to do, right? So it's, it's fall, it's winter. Well, they're not going to go anywhere. So then it was, let's, you know, let them do it for, get a plan, two-year plan. And two years became three, became four, became five. So is there any reason that's, the township could? The county's never interjected on a township trying to work something out and giving people time. But I can't answer that. That's up to the town board.
Okay, thanks.
And there is township representation here too.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So that may come up yet. Any other questions at this time for applicants or staff? All right. Then let's open up the public hearing on this one. Is anyone here from the public that wants to speak? If you've provided testimony, just note that that's in already. So just try to keep a brief in. But otherwise, come on up to the front and just state your name and address for the record. We'll try to keep it to two minutes if you can, but. All good. Thanks, Heidi.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. Heidi Stalbarger, Wakefield Township. So to address the question about the compliance agreement, the first compliance agreement was issued October, excuse me, November 1st of 2018. And that ran through June 30th of 2021 because primarily the boats were only stored from like September through May. And so we decided, you know, by June 30th, everything is gone. And then. Yeah. And so then in, at the end of that time period, it was a three-year time period. And so that's kind of that time when COVID happened, building supplies were in short supply. And they came back and asked us for an extension. So on August 21st of 2021, the township issued an extension until June 30th of 2022, thinking, you know, you'll have the winter to kind of work on this. June 30th was approaching of 2022. And just knowing that the, the building that they originally planned hadn't worked out yet over that winter. They came back in May of 2022 to just say, look, we're totally not ready for this. Would you give us another extension? And so that expires coming up here, June 30th of 2023. And I don't know that, I, I know that there was discussion among the board members about extending that. And the discussion was rather, you know, why don't, why don't we look for a more permanent solution instead of issuing these compliance agreements? I don't know that the board would give them a hard no on issuing another compliance agreement. But since, you know, we're going down this path, I think this needs to probably play out and then find out what the applicant wishes to do beyond this.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. All right. Come on up.
Hello?
Hi.
Kyle Knutson. I'm the neighbor that shares, I have a legal easement on the same road where they access their boat storage. My wife and I own that property with our single-family residence, three little kids, currently zoned A10. So JCMH next door, outdoor boat storage. They bought their property approximately five years ago. We bought our property from Dan Lang also here approximately three years ago. At that time, you know, we, we sought out the township because we knew the boats were there. We could see them. That's fine. But we had the understanding with the guiding document being the compliance agreement, right? Wanting the rural lifestyle. We like the cows. We like the barn that the neighbor has. With the understanding that there'd be indoor boat storage, you know, that following year, so that we would think of it in our perspective as farm storage, right? There would be some seasonal traffic. We accepted that. You know, it'd be coming in in the spring, coming out in the fall, no issue. But, you know, we were hoping that that, that landscape would be steel buildings, you know, and, and some seasonal traffic. So, you know, the, the, the first year goes by and after the fact, we learned there was an extension granted, didn't really know it. And then again, another extension granted, didn't really know it till after the fact. So we've kind of got, gotten to this June 30 date. You know, we appreciate them as neighbors, great people. But, you know, we've, we've kind of made an investment. We did make our largest investment for our household personally with a guiding document that the township had laid out or structured in front of us. And now the feel for the residents next door is, well, we'll just flip it to commercial. You know, and our biggest fear is what we all can't control, which is what is the future use if it goes commercial? My day job is commercial banking. I know projects in this immediate area that had been financed because I did them personally on a large scale that did go up during COVID. Is it challenging? Yes. Is it expensive? Yes. Everything is. So I know it's feasible. Do I think there's a need for boat storage in that area? Very apparent, yes. To the north, it was stated that there's another marine dealer in tune. Again, they acquired additional land doing outdoor boat storage. We didn't say a word. It's across County Road 83. There's a barrier with the swamp. We call it our fancy low land. You know, but it was already zoned commercial. So in our eyes, there's a visible barrier. It's already zoned appropriately in our eyes. You know, that's, that's not concerning to us or our lifestyle with what we wanted being rural. So, you know, it's, it's, it's frustrating for us to hear a spot zoning request in an area that's immediately surrounded by residents, which is fact. I had taken a little petition, not in an effort to slight Casey and Jeff around to the immediate neighbors, just to be the voice of the neighborhood. At least in an effort to say, you know, is, is anybody in favor of wanting a spot zoning request to commercial in fear of what that could become down the road? This was two evenings of driving around with my son, just grabbing who we could. It's not the entire neighborhood, but there wasn't anyone that indicated they would be in favor of that, understanding the changes that could come outside of our control, opening up Pandora's Box of what could commercial bring if it ever was resold. So that's one of my and my wife's major concerns. So the current use, you know, if you open up the discussion of the land, you know, in, in years past, we've noticed there's been multiple cuttings. Obviously, it's a drought year. You know, I think the, the condition of that soil, not a dig against the, the land itself, but it's not prime soil, right? We all knew that. We still grow our garden off it. We have no issues with it. But in a, you know, what year on farmland that's maintained, tilled, crop rotations, irrigated, you know, you're going to get a better outcome, right? I still would argue there's, there's profitable land use with it zoned as ag 40, which is our obvious desire or is holding the landowner to respectfully, you know, the original agreement, which was our guiding document to making our investment in that property. So we're hoping that there's greater scrutiny, you know, brought to light as a fact that, you know, other residential neighbors made investments with the guiding document, that now the township has blessed a change or deviation from that, stating the, the, the greater plan, I'm not using the right language here, for the county being the guiding document for that decision. You know, this is seasonal boat storage, although it may support some jobs. I mean, it's not like it's maintaining a lot of activity or economic stimulation throughout the year, right? Also, there's commercial land immediately to the north. So, you know, I, I can empathize with economics, right? But I, my opinion, which is just that, is that it isn't right for committees or boards to have economics be the sounding basis for why someone hasn't performed two original agreements. There's a lot of things I'd like to do if I had the economic means. I just don't, right? But there is commercially zoned land, much like Intune, the other marine dealer just across the road, did acquire for outdoor boat storage, which we didn't take issue with. It was already zoned appropriately. You know, that's what's rough about this instance. So, you know, it feels a little bit, I think, after the fact and timing is, you know, to me of significance, where we're five years in on this thing and there hasn't been performance on original agreements to construct buildings. You know, however difficult those conversations are financially or otherwise. But they have stated in prior meetings at the township that they have the ability to store in excess of 200 boats at their current facility. I'm sure not conveniently, which is currently zoned commercial within Richmond. So there is a means to storing some boats, maybe not as many, in a commercially zoned building. You know, understanding they want to grow that, but everything has its time and the place. So, you know, my questions to you guys would be, you know, is there ways to dictate timing and performance? Because I haven't seen that performance from prior agreements over the last five years. Again, being very respectful of Casey and Jeff, great neighbors, but that is a concern of mine. You know, even with other, other issues related to outdoor boat storage, you know, our preferences to sea buildings. And then, you know, is there a way for an ordinance change to allow them to operate what they do as ag 40? You know, I pose that, I think, to staff. And, you know, I think that, that is being prevented from the way the county ordinance reads, which I think is what Casey stated earlier. So that is our case for why we're obviously wanting it to remain ag 40.
All right. Thank you. All right. Oh, we got another one coming up.
My name's Rachel Schaefer and I am located at 18450. I'm the property just south, so like kind of long parcel there. The photos that were just up, the ones with the boats, is actually my view from my backyard. One of my concerns, or my main concern with this is that I, you know, it was only a few years ago, five years ago, that the same board got together that actually denied the rezoning quest, request from an adjacent property. What was actually, they were requesting, it was residential one from ag 40, which was ultimately denied as it didn't fit the highest and best use of the property. I'm not sure that there's been any, well, there hasn't been any infrastructure changes in the area that would, you know, that would make commercial a better fit in this area. I think this is a perfect example of spot zoning. To the question that got brought up just a few minutes ago, as far as why is there that ordinance for ag land? And I think that's why. I think that looks a lot different than a few tractors or farm equipment, equipment in the area. No one's really had an issue with it. At least we haven't had anything to say about it because we've all been under the understanding that this was temporary. I think it's probably safe to say that the intentions were brought up, that if these, if the intentions are put to put buildings up, then why are we doing this anyways? If those are the intentions. I think it's safe to say that it's probably not. And if they are, I mean, this still leads the issue where this is a, this is, we've all made our biggest investments in this area, building all new homes because we want to be in a rural area. This does exactly the opposite of that when, you know, not so long ago, there's properties that are commercial or industrial that are just north and south, right off Highway 23, that are, are perfect for these. That's what they're there for. You know, I think it just sets a precedent that we don't have to go through with. We don't have to follow through with the agreements that we, that we join into because we're able to just kind of see our way out of it. So that's where, you know, we live here. That's, that's the difference is we actually move out here because, you know, we do have, we have animals. We want to be in a rural area. Unfortunately, like I, respectfully, I understand where they're coming from. However, I strongly oppose it just because this is our, it, it benefits one person. It doesn't benefit the people who have invested everything that they have to build their properties. Our values will go down if you think that I'm going to show my house and that's the view on my backyard and it would be the same value as if it, you know, looked otherwise. That's just not true. And just to the point of the farmland, I actually, before any of these properties were sold, I actually used to buy from the, the original landowner and we used to get bailed as, I mean, we're in a drought right now. Of course, we only got one cutting and it's June. I used to get three cuttings, cuttings off it every year. So to say that it's trash farmland or like it's not usable, that's just not true. So that is why I'm asking that it be, that, that this. So that is why I'm asking that it be, that, that this not go through.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else here from the public?
Hi, Dan Lang, 18976, 223rd Street. I'm the one that sold them the property. I didn't give them a building rate for a reason, so they couldn't develop it. And when you, when you make it go commercial, it's not what they're doing with it. I mean, they're great people. It's what can be done after. I mean, if they're, I'm in business and there's nothing to say that Channel Marine is going to be open for 10 more years or five more years or two more years. And when this gets zoned commercial, I mean, you open up a pan, like Pandora's Box with it. Now, what I would like to know, can we bring like the, yeah, the aerial with the boats? When you can see it, how much land is there actually with boats on it? I mean, like a guess, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of land there, there's, where there's no boats on. And if you go to like where our, where the farm used to be? Would be right on County Road 71. Yeah, like Angie, like we're, yeah, we're the, yeah. Yeah, where the, where the make farm used to be. So that's ours there too. So we have, and I, and I'm, I'm almost 100% certain. So my uncle Sheldon has a, like a little spot right there and I think they rezone that commercial. And then it's our, like, I think it's a three and a half acre field and then it's own commercial on the other side of that. There you go. You can see it. I mean, I, I don't know how, like I said, I don't know how much land them boats are on, but I'd be curious to see how many boats we can get in that flat. I mean, that, that should be zoned commercial. I remember being at the meeting years ago when my uncle rezoned his shed across the road commercial. I don't understand why to this day. But let's, I mean, I would be willing to sell them that and make that line straight through that's commercial. And, I mean, this is spot zoning. It's, it's a definition of spot zoning. So, so like if this owns commercial, well, what's to say that, I mean, you can't do for one and not the other. So, I mean, what's to say that I don't come in and I want to zone my 70 some acres there all commercial? And you have, I mean, that, that is, that land use, I mean, farmland? No, it's not great farmland. There ain't no great farmland all around Richmond. I mean, I don't care where you go around Richmond, there ain't no great farmland around Richmond. So that's a dumb excuse. And that was like Rachel said, it was our ones. And when I was talking to the commissioners, it was Rod Gurken. I mean, he's a hometown guy. Let, he bought the property, let him do something with it. But maybe not our ones. Let's compromise on our fives. And that's what happened. And that's what that, that whole area was, I mean, I bought it so I didn't have to live around a bunch of homes. And that's why I didn't give them any building rates. And I agree with them putting up buildings. I mean, I understood that 100% when I sold, when I sold the property to them. So I guess, and I wrote, I did write a letter and.
We have that in the record too.
Yep. And I did, so that's, that's my piece. I mean, I have nothing, these, these two guys are just great people. I have nothing against that. But I'm in business too. I understand. Sometimes it's tough. Sometimes you can't do things, but it is what it is. Thank you.
All right. That covered the room for the most part. So with that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
All right. Motion by Dave, second by Rich, close the public hearing. All who's in favor say aye. Aye? All who oppose? All right. Public hearing closed. Any additional discussion on this item?
I've got several.
Yeah, fairway.
So if I hear things correctly, that there, there was or is support for some buildings on this parcel for the purpose of storing boats? Is that kind of the gist of what I'm, do we know, like where? If you, if you could, this is hypothetical, but if, if you could put the buildings up, where would they go on this lot? And how many would you have to put up to store? It's hard to put, it's, 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 it's like there's kind of a pattern there. I get it, but it's kind of random in a sense too.
Easiest way to, to kind of figure on boats, like primarily pontoons, is you need approximately 250 square feet for one unit. Figuring about 10 feet wide, 25 feet long for your average pontoon. So when we looked at the property, the west side of the property, that western property line, north to south is probably, is pretty much the flattest of it. So how the boats are basically laid out, how they loop around, they loop around the flat part of it and the high ground. Where it drops down to like where it says Wakefield on there, that's lowland. So we don't store down in there because that floods in the spring. So we keep up the, the boats up on the high ground, basically that way. So the sheds would primarily go, you know, kind of where the, the flat or higher ground is per se, like primarily along the west side. When we looked and talked to the lumberyard, we were looking at like 80 by 200 buildings. So that's a 16,000 square foot building and could house approximately 60 boats.
Are the boats like stacked at all?
No, they'd be single. Yep. Yep. There's no great way to do it to maximize space. If you, if you stack it, you have to have forklift capable of doing it and then you have to have good enough lighting and us wanting to do it, keeping the buildings as simple as possible, not running power into them, just having like eve lighting on them or even just temporary lights you'd run with a generator. We don't want to have to pull power into the property if we don't need to. And just dirt floor, just keeping it as feasible as possible.
Mr. Chair, Dave, just to kind of go a little bit farther back on that issue. So I think it was in maybe 20, I don't know, Jen maybe can help me, when, when we amended our ordinance to allow storage, indoor storage, if you will, in agricultural zones, probably in 2010, was that 2010 maybe? Might have been around 2010. So before that, even your old turkey barns and poultry barns out there, you couldn't use for storage and we knew what was happening. So we changed the ordinance to allow it and then also allowed then for people to build new, not just use existing. So that is an allowed use in agricultural zoning district, storage of, storage buildings are allowed in the egg district. So it's the outdoor piece that's the, that's the problem.
I was just going to ask, being that we're looking at a possibility of two buildings and you have 40 acres there. Would your intentions be to do any other egg activity on those acres?
Whatever would remain.
Correct, yeah. We would look.
I'm just thinking what we've dealt with in the last number of years and it's, it's been the solar arrays, the solar gardens. And there's a potential there that you would have all those solar panels out there instead of boats. I just look at all the opportunities there from an agricultural standpoint, what's allowable?
Well, right. I mean, so I, it's, it's, it's spot on. And what we're talking about right now is it's not, we're not talking about egg issues. We're talking about residential issues. So back to the point of zoning that we talked, or we had in our last application. Zoning exists for a reason. From an aerial photo perspective, from an aerial photo perspective, this area is broken up and there's commercial right across, I mean, within hundreds of yards. You could make an argument that it fits. The way the land's oriented and the way the road structure is set up, it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit the use. This is a residential piece from a zoning perspective all day long. It's not, it's not egg use either anymore, the way that thing's all segmented, parceled off. So from a zoning, you would look at this and say logically, this is residential. It's not egg, it's not commercial. Normally. No, that's my opinion, that others may see it differently. But what we're talking about, the issues, the residential issues, they're not egg issues.
I see with the, with the joining, close proximity of industrial and commercial, that it, it is, it does fit.
And, and to your point, like even you look in overhead photo, you can, you can make it work. You can argue this one both ways.
And with the low lease score or you.
So Mr. Chair, what we're talking about here, I think we have to focus on the commercial use and not what the applicant plans to do with it. So if you look at, they provided us the list there. And, you know, do we want a truck terminal here? Do we want an RV park here? So when we look at the list of uses in commercial areas, once we zone this commercial, everything on this list is open.
And again, on an aerial photograph, you can make an argument, well, it's commercial right across, it'd be appropriate. But when you look at the roads and the, the structure of the area, that's where now that list, opinion of one, isn't appropriate. But that's opinion of one, so. And we have a few spots here. So any other further discussion or should we go to findings of fact on this one? Any other questions or comments or thoughts anyone wants to share?
Could we give the applicants a chance to respond to any concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. Any, any comments that you guys have on, on the concerns that you're hearing?
Well, I did have, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I just, I did have a question about, when did the boat storage start and when were the homes built? I was, I'm sorry, but I think it was Kyle and Rachel, I think. I apologize, I didn't catch your last names, but.
Yeah, well, go, we'll grab that real quick. Public testimony is closed. However, we can, we can, I still think get that answer. So real quick, Kyle, what year? Okay. And, and your house is pre-existing, I think. Was it not? That, that's new as well? What year? 2017, okay.
But boats hadn't started to storage there.
Yeah. Yeah, prior. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions, Dave? Any other comments or anything you guys had? Okay. Well, then let's move to findings of fact. So number one is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would say it's currently zoned ag, but if they commercial, if they zone it commercial, it becomes consistent with the ordinance. So currently not, but with the change in zoning, it does become consistent with the ordinance.
Yeah. Yep. I, I would agree. Thanks, Jason. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county, a list applicable sections? I would say in this case, probably a few ways you could, you could look at this when it comes to comprehensive plans and goals. But when I look at the comprehensive plans and goals under the living goals, there's one, it's collaborate with cities and townships to maintain sustainable growth patterns that align with the comprehensive plan, manage the impacts of growth and development in the county's rural character and natural resources. Under those two, I, I don't believe it fits. Commercial in that location does not fit with the living goals and just looking at the overall transition plan of that entire area.
I would also add, it appears to be in conflict with living goal number two, which is manage the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character and natural resources. So.
Anyone else see it differently?
Well, I'm just going to bring this up in the transitional area policies. Number two, if you evaluate developments proposals in the transitional areas using the comprehensive plan's future land use, it fits.
You're saying it fits commercial?
It fits, it fits as a commercial piece of property because that's the transitional area.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay. So we have a couple that, yeah, you can, you can make the argument both ways. So, and I, I think that was well stated because this really falls in that spot.
Exactly what was talked about when they were coming up with the 2040 plan.
Yeah. Yeah. Very good. Thanks, Rich. Good, good comments there, feedback, everyone. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I think the, the testimony submitted by the neighborhood says that it's not compatible.
I, I would agree. So anyone see that differently?
Well, this, it does feel like when I was out there that the parcel in the area is a little kind of out of sight. It seemed to me, I understand that kind of the blue shrink wrap would be kind of annoying if I live there. But to have a, a, a structure, I, I think it could be done in a way that is compatible with the area.
That part's true, Dave. Let me ask you this. What if it was a truck stop? Or if it was? A warehouse?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that that's the unknown. And as, and as I look at this, that particular lot is in the, what is it called? The expansion zone or, or whatever.
Transitional.
Transitional zone. That's, that's, you know, I.
Well, and, and I actually, I'll, I'll take that as a, a yes in some ways. I mean, I think your, your position is valid and I'm just going to make the counterargument. So yes, in some ways. And then I would say, depending on the commercial use, it would not be based on the neighborhood, based on where it is, is positioned. So depends on the commercial application. The tricky part in zoning is you can't control what business is going to be there.
A lot of the, a lot of the servicing, uh, roadways and stuff will dictate what could be there as a commercial property. And when somebody says, well, what would you, truck stop well? This area here, it would never be because it, the infrastructure leading to it wouldn't sustain it, so.
And a plumbing and heating company with the shed there may fit just fine. So it depends on the commercial application.
The boats that I saw, it was kind of faint, but it appeared that the boats were currently being stored in that transitional area. And I guess my other question is, and maybe it's too late for questions, I don't know, but who determined that that was a transitional area? Is that, was that the county or was that the township?
That was, yeah, through a process. Yep. There was a, there was a process over the course of a couple of years gaining feedback and from the, the public and bringing in.
So we put that parcel in a transitional area?
Yep. Yep.
I mean, it, it's a mess. The interesting question is, so if they, in, with the ag storage, they can put up buildings.
Yeah.
To store the boats.
Yeah.
So we could potentially have extensive storage buildings on the site.
Yep.
And, all right, I'm not a farmer, but we have blue shrink wrapped boats here in a lot of ag land. We have white shrink wrapped payments, which are very subtly different at 55 miles an hour. So.
That was the spirit of my question right away on the ordinance side, because if we're looking at long-term, what to do when it comes to ag and preserving ag as a preferred land use, these are some of the ways that people may do it. And, and Rich made a great point earlier that this could all be solar panels. This could all, there is a lot of things that could be constructed here that are perfectly appropriate under the current zoning. So we have a split decision on, on that. And I honestly, I, I think that's, you can make an argument for both. So we'll drive on. How has the applicant demonstrated that standard? How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated and the ordinance will be satisfied?
Based upon their proposed use for the land, that is a acceptable use within the commercial zoning district, so they would meet that.
Yep, yep.
And they've worked with the township, and they've tried to comply.
Worked with the township, yep. Thank you, thank you, Mike. All right. And then five, any other issues pertinent to the matter on this one?
Township recommended approval.
Yep.
Interestingly though, it was a split approval, so it wasn't unanimous, it was a two to one, so...
It had three to one.
Three to one?
Three or four to one, yeah.
Two to one.
Two to one.
Two to one?
Three to one.
Go.
Really, a lot of these other things, I think, public health, safety, traffic generation impacts, when it comes to other issues pertinent to this matter, so it again comes down to the commercial use, that would end up using it. That could be minimal, it could be highly impactful, depending on what it is. Okay, so with that, a motion would be in order.
I will move, we recommend the board deny the application for this change in zoning.
All right, do we have a second? Jason, I'm gonna second you on this one. From the perspective of, to me, if I'm looking at zoning, the most appropriate zoning for this area, if I was gonna pick this parcel, is residential or ag? Ag is not preferred either. I mean, if, if you're just gonna start from scratch transitionally and, and look and say what makes sense for that property based on the surroundings, I think most people would come at residential, maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's my reason for support of that second. So with that, motion by Jason, second by Jason, all those in favor say aye?
Just a minute.
Oh, go ahead, Joe. You did that twice to me tonight.
No, no, but with your second, this, now your chance for discussion.
Okay, yep.
Why, why people are defending or, or gonna deny, and I wanna hear this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm pretty sure it's gonna get denied, but we can, we can discuss this real quick if you want. Anyone else?
Can you?
You made the second for discussion, and so we can have discussion now.
Yeah, no, it's perfect, I'm, I'm good with that.
Can you clarify the motion?
Uh, the motion was to recommend denial of the commercial zoning.
I'm deciding whether or not a transitional area, and the plan for it being a transitional area outweighs the, outweighs the other uses in the area, which is residential, and the testimony that we've heard from those, from those in those residential areas.
Oh, wait, is there any other thoughts anyone has?
Well, I...
And we can go, we can go to the roll call too, Dave, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I think that there's a, isn't that, I'm kinda stuck on that transitional area. I think that actually the, the aesthetics of the area could be improved if, if some of those boats were enclosed, and none of us have a crystal ball about what could be there someday, so I, I'm really conflicted on this one.
Well, and then just for clarity, we're not saying you can't store boats on the site. We're saying you, with the ag use, you can store boats outside on the site.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, actually, I'd still be for an ordinance, looking at the ordinance.
Yep. So is that, Jennifer, is that correct? If they put up a structure, they can store boats in there.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
But if it was zoned ag, I can, so is it allowed to use, I could store 100 junk tractors out there? Turn into a tractor junkyard?
I think so.
Hold on, no, no, no.
Not, not junk, you know, it's your trash you can't, if it's used.
No, we're talking junk and salvage here, that's its own thing.
That's right.
I'm gonna, I will stop that discussion, Mike, right now.
New John Deere's and Internationals would work.
Licensed, yeah.
Licensed, there you go, okay. Any other discussion before we go back, or Jennifer, go ahead?
I was just gonna point out, Mr. Chair, Tara had brought up struggling with the transitional area, and what does that mean? So this is from our comprehensive plan, these are design standards for transitional areas. The project minimizes potential conflict between urban and rural, the project is logically connected to existing development, zoning districts shall be identified to prevent leapfrog or isolated development within contiguous land use districts, the delivery of other government services like fire, police, public works has been consulted, and the county is satisfied with the development, that it can be served through good conservation oriented site design practices, the project is able to protect and preserve natural resources, and then the project has been coordinated and aligned with the city and or township plans for future growth. Those are design criteria for in the transitional area. If that helps at all.
All right. Let's wait another second before we, we still have the motion and the second, but I'll give everyone a second to think about that a little bit yet, and then we'll go to a roll call on that. If you're all good? Everyone okay?
So...
Just restate it one more time.
Yeah, all right, we'll let Dave go first.
I just wanna understand that, um, if the rezoning is approved, so why are we here with, on this issue? If it's, if it's ag, it can, you can have buildings. Why, why is this?
You can't have outdoor boat storage, like currently exist.
Everything has to be inside.
Everything has to be indoor. With commercial, it could, you could have outdoor.
And that is your, well, that is your plan, to have a blend of indoor, inside and no?
Yep. For the record before to go, that is one of the trickiest ones we've had in a while, because you can make this one argument both ways, so appreciate everyone's patience and feedback, because it's important.
I, I'm not sure if the transitional area is logically connected to the existing development, I, I, that's...
Yep, that's the tricky one.
What is the township whole land zoned?
It just, it just popped up, it's...
Mr. Chair, that's an allowed use in the ag district government and administrative service buildings.
Okay, so it's still ag, all right. Yep. If you gave tours of the boat storage, you might call it acre tourism too, it's hard to say, but a lot of ways to argue this one, right?
Need an attorney here.
All right, we don't actually, so this is a good way to do it. So the, the motion that is there is to recommend denial on the commercial rezoning, basically straight up, just as it is, recommend denial of the commercial zoning. So that's what we can take our first vote on, and then we can...
See where it goes?
Yep, see where it goes, so. Anything else? Yep.
In my mind, I'm thinking how you can use the property. Could they ask a variance for the outdoor storage of the boats?
I don't think so.
They go to the Board of Adjustments.
Jennifer?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blankish, again, that gets back to it being a use variance, which we can't do variances for uses.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll take this vote. So, motion to recommend denial of the commercial rezoning, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those, all right, so that's three ayes, all those opposed? Nay.
Aye, or no.
Do a roll call, please.
Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call, so, Mike?
Nay.
Nay? Rich?
Nay.
Tara?
Aye.
Jason, aye. Dave?
Nay.
Jason?
Aye.
Aye, so we're split.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, yep.
Mr. Chair, we've had this come up before, and since this goes to the county board anyway, it's if there's a tie vote, the board decides, which they decide anyway, I think...
You just pass it on?
Basically.
You could, or you could, you could go ahead and, and have somebody make the motion to approve and see if it goes any different, or you could leave it as it is.
Sounds good. Why, why don't we do it, we'll just cover all of our bases on this one. We have a recommendation for approval.
I'll make a, a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Rich, second by Mike, all those in favor...
Discussion?
Oh, any other discussion that hasn't been discussed? All right, all those in favor of recommending approval for the commercial rezoning, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So we, we ended up with the split, three and three.
Roll call anyway.
So the ayes in this case were Mike, Rich?
Aye.
And Dave? Nays were Tara, Jason and Jason. And so, Joe, good luck with this one, have fun. I mean, it honestly, I, applicants totally get it, it's a tricky one.
My recommendation to the board will to have their own public hearing.
Yep.
Because we have a guy.
Yep.
Rather than take a vote on it, it, the board will need to hear this.
And think about, and think about the ordinance itself too, and is there anything that we wanna, or should think about long-term? Because we have the same shed thing, by the way, too. Not that these are completely separate issues, we, we're gonna have a lot more land uses, that's residential, I get, but, all right, so with that, that'll go to the county board, it's gonna be a bit for that to go, so...
Well, Mr. Chair, that'll go July 11th.
July 11th, okay, so July, oh, that doesn't take that long then, unless...
It's the next meeting, and then Commissioner Persky will likely recommend a public hearing, and then that'll be about 30 days out.
Yep.
And just so that people in the audience understand that, so then it'll come to the board, and then we will, I will make the request for our own public hearing, so what you saw happen here is gonna actually happen in front of the county board.
County Commissioners.
So, we, we will set a date, we will set a date for that.
Yes, typically.
Probably, yeah, probably in August. And so you, you'll have an opportunity to have same testimony, get any more information.
Oh.
Okay?
Say thank you to the board for consideration and everything.
Another notice will be sent.
Yep, thanks, guys, appreciate it. Good luck to everybody.
Motion to approve with a minutes.
Thanks. Motion by Jason, second by Rich, all those in favor say aye?
A quick question, or correction. I was not present at the May 25th meeting, I was absent.
Okay.
But you were here in spirit.
I was here in spirit, I was here in spirit.
So let's make a correction to, to Dave on the attendance side, and that's what the motion was based on, I'm pretty sure, that Jason made and Rich seconded, was with that change, so...
Yep.
With that, all those...
The name isn't in the, the document any further than that front page.
Okay, so all those in favor of recommending minutes with that adjustment, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, and then, is there any other discussion?
I, I have a couple of comments, a couple of things. First of all, I, I appreciate your integrity on that zoning, because I think we, we need, we need to keep that, otherwise, if we start opening up that slippery slope, then where's the integrity on our zoning? So, thank you for that. And then on the other thing is, on the motions, if, if it's, if there's not a, if, if everybody's, if it's a one-person deal, Persky wants this thing and he's gonna have it, and I make the motion to have it, if you folks are all opposed, don't give it a second. But if there's gray area, it's, it's okay to have that second, just so that you bring out the discussion, rather than make the assumption that, of what everybody else is thinking, so that some, discussion is good.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, and I encourage you that, and same thing with the chair. As chair, usually you don't make a second, unless you feel it's necessary to make that second for discussion. That's good, that's good board function. So you guys did it the right way. One other thing I wanted to say is...
Come on, Joe, I wanna get one in there.
Okay.
You said two.
Well, no, this one, this one is, is irritating, because we, we, we denied that vacation home rental here two, two times. Now, it went to the Board of Adjustment, and they passed it, but I don't understand what you said when it comes to use, that, that's, that's not permissible to have them change it just for use. How could they have, how, how could they let that vacation home rental happen when we said it couldn't happen?
The Pamela Winter one?
Yeah.
She, her property didn't qualify for a rental because of the size, so size is something you can request a variance from, bulk, height, density, those are numerical things you can ask for a variance. So, let me back up. On her property, Pamela Winter's own R1, vacation rentals aren't allowed to use in the R1 zone in Wakefield Township, so the use is allowed, it's, the problem was the lot size, and that's what she got the variance for.
Okay.
Now, my question here tonight is, is, when we, when we did the vote here, should we not have recused somebody so we didn't have a tie?
No, no, that's fine.
You go with everybody's.
The only reason you would recuse if there's a necessity to recuse.
Okay.
But someone could have abstained, but, but you, but that's not necessarily good practice either, because by restaining, you're, you're allowing the extra vote automatically to proceed.
Okay, I, I wanna make a quick comment, and it's in regards to the issue of the after-the-fact thing. When a contractor makes a decision based off what he heard at a training session, maybe we need to, who's ever presenting, and they say things that, well, the county's looking at changing the ordinance or whatever, but they should also say, the ordinance has not been changed, so you have to operate according to what the, the ordinance says that are in place, because I, I thought, well, that's kind of a weak excuse. And we keep getting these little excuses for the after-the-fact, what causes the after-the-fact, and I'm thinking, okay, that's what he said here, it's a communication issue, and I guess I, we need to just clarify that to the presenters at these workshops or whatever, need to be clear about that, and I think that would alleviate some of our problems.
On that one, if you looked at the pictures of before the project started, you, you, I could tell that, that there's, to me, if I was a contractor, there would have been a clear intent to put that wall there.
Along the steps.
Yep.
Yeah.
You had to do something.
You have to keep it from washing down. And the other thing is, you know, what's happening with the grade of the slope from the building, I'm gra, I'm thinking it probably slopes a little bit, so now you got a rain collector and it hits that embankment and creates problems, so. I make a motion we adjourn.
Well, as, right before you do that, I, I appreciate the feedback, I just wanted, back to your point, Joe, I, I don't ever wanna be, just 'cause I'm the chair, I, don't let me ever be a hammer as far as controlling the discussion. I, I'm trying to facilitate the discussion as much as possible and then keep it moving, so don't ever take my trying to keep it moving as I'm trying to quiet anyone down, share your thoughts, so with that, go.
But, and you're doing the right thing, Jason, by making sure that they are engaged, and, and, and that's what you want.
Yeah, okay.
Hammer down.
Motion to adjourn by Rich, second by Dave, thanks, Dave. Alls in favor, say aye. Aye, alls opposed, done, all right.